This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of Killenly Town Council, and we are calling the special town council meeting to order. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 6, 2025. For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance, except for Mr. Grandalsky, who is absent with notification. At this time, we'll move on in the agenda. The next item up is interviews of board and commission applicants. Daniel Ba is seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission. Daniel, are you here? Okay. We'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item 3B. Jane Bullock is seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission. Ms. Bullock is interested in being reappointed as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. Her term would run from April 1, 2025, to March 31, 2030. This would be regular member position number five. Ms. Bullock attended three out of three meetings in 2024 and six out of eight meetings in 2023. The Historic District Commission has not had any meetings yet in 2025. The Historic District Commission currently has no vacancies. The regular term member runs for five years from April 1 to March 31. Welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about your time on the Historic District Commission, and why you're seeking reappointment?
Um, moving to Killenly, four years ago, my husband and I renovated a historic house on Winter Street, and I'm very interested in historic buildings and wanted to be part of the community and help out. So we decided to volunteer for the Historic Commission. I've enjoyed it very much. I enjoy working with people on the commission. I find it very interesting. And especially Catherine and I, we both enjoyed working with Catherine. She will be very much so.
Thank you. I will open up to council for any questions, comments?
Just thank you for serving. We do have some very beautiful old houses in Killenly, and it would be really nice to have them preserved as part of it.
Again, thank you for the time you spend. It takes a lot of time out of your busy schedule, I'm sure, and thank you.
You have any questions for us? Okay. On behalf of the council and on behalf of the town, just want to thank you for your time volunteering and serving on this commission. We'll be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is item 3C. Joshua Bullock is seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission. Mr. Bullock is seeking reappointment as an alternate member. His term would run from April 1, 2025, to March 30, 2028. This would be alternate member position number one. Mr. Bullock has attended two out of three meetings in 2024 and two out of eight meetings in 2023. The Historic District Commission has not had any meetings this year. Currently, there are no vacancies, and again, the alternate member term runs three years, April 1 to March 31. Welcome. Same thing, if you could tell us a little bit about your background and why you're seeking reappointment?
Sure. I think Jane probably didn't say anything, but definitely interested in historic houses. We've renovated several houses in the area. I've been on Winter Street. We did renovate that house. We try to keep as much of the original trim work as possible as much as we can. It's been, it's been a good experience being on the commission. I learned a little bit about how local governments are supposed to, that's what I'm interested in. Yeah, it's been, it's been a great experience.
I'm curious, what was the number at Winter Street?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. Excellent.
All right. Any other, any other questions, comments from council? And again, thank you for volunteering.
And as somebody that served on the Historic District Commission at one point and was part of the Tersentennial, Killenly's got a very rich history, and it's always good to have somebody with a desire to. I think we just had somebody appointed to your commission that had a real desire to, thought the historical society was like a museum that we had in town, so. And it is. I mean, it's really cool to get able to walk through and really see what life was like. And so thank you so much for both what you and your wife have been doing.
All right. Thank you. And we'll be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday. Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is item 3D. Paul Archer is seeking reappointment to the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission. As a regular member, his term would run from May 1, 2025, to April 30, 2028. This would be regular member position number one. Mr. Archer attended three out of four meetings in 2025 and seven out of 10 meetings in 2024. The Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission currently has one alternate member vacancy, and the regular member term runs for three years from May 1 to April 30. Welcome. If you want to just tell us a little bit about your background, why you're seeking reappointment?
I'm presently a professional land surveyor. I own my own little company in Brooklyn. Have been surveying in this field for over thirty-five years, and I feel my expertise could be health here. I've lived in Killenly for fifteen years, and I want to give back to the community, and I feel this is the best way to do it.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council?
I just have a comment, and this is for all of the Inland Wetlands Water Course members and also the conservation. Has anybody been following the legislation in Connecticut, how they're trying to push as-of-right development, take over planning and zoning, and get rid of any inland wetlands water course? Any regulations to protect these areas?
Yeah, you guys have a very good person in Jonathan Blake. Jonathan keeps us very up to date with everything that's going on in the legislation, and it's discussed at all our monthly meetings and what's going on.
Okay. And do you know if anybody has written a public comment to any of those bills?
I, off the top of my head, I don't know.
Sandy?
Jonathan has.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the work that you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. I know you're very busy. So you take the time.
Oh, sorry. Surveyed my property. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Again, just want to thank you for your time volunteering and serving on the commission, and we'll be voting on your reappointment next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is item 3E. Sandy Eggers is seeking reappointment to the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission. As a regular member, her term would run from May 1, 2025, to April 30, 2028. This would be regular member position number three. And because I already read off all the other details, we will not read those off again.
Good evening, everyone. But actually, I think most of you know me, but one reason that I say with inland wetlands is the balance that we have within the commission is a kind of strange mix, if you look at it. But the balance it gives us is amazing. My background's in agriculture. And you think, you're always working, obviously, you're working outdoors, you're working contingent on the weather, the conditions, the soils, and everything else. But then when you learn, you learn more and more about what's happening and what the actual regulations are. That's the thing with wetlands, there's nothing left to your whim. It is, it is by law. The regulations are what the regulations are. But when you have such a nice mix of us, it works so well, because I do have the ag background. Paul's a surveyor. We've got a professional engineer that sits on the commission. It makes it easy. It really does. And things are pretty clearly spelled out. I think that our staff's amazing. And Jonathan has written letters on that and everything. He's been right on that and commenting and following all of that potential legislation. At this point, nothing's actually moved out of any committee, as far as I understand from Jonathan. But there's a lot of it, but maybe you have another update?
I don't, they, I mean, they try to have the dummy bills, and then the next minute, you know that
Then all of a sudden, you're there.
They're there, and it's two minutes before midnight, and they have to vote on it, and nobody's read anything.
Yeah. So hopefully, none of it, it's not, it's not really very wise legislation in our case. Without a doubt. It takes all of our control of it. But that's, that's where we stand, and the staff is amazing. And I think that one of the key things we do is, you know, people go, well, everything ended up getting approved. No, it doesn't. It's worked its way until it's approved, is what happens. You try to work with people, and they'll come in and they'll start with Jonathan with God knows what kind of an application. And by the time it gets to us, it's in pretty good shape, but then we tweak it some. And yeah, they left with an approval, but it was a far different approval than what they initially came in with. And usually, it's usually in their betterment, too. So that's about it.
I do enjoy watching, watching your meetings. You do run a really nice meeting. You keep, you keep it to the points, and you don't get, don't get personal. I just say, this is, this is it.
That might be why it's a better thing that I'm on wetlands, because that does have regulations, so I can't go off. It's a place where I can be contained, but it's still, that's always a good thing. But it's a good bunch of people. That's why you can do that. And as I said, the different input, I don't think you find a lot of towns that have the skill level that we're fortunate enough to have. So it's really a cool thing.
We've had some very good applicants on different boards and commissions in the last couple of years. They're really good fits.
Are there any, any big projects going on right now that you guys are looking at?
No, and I'd ask Paul, too. The thing that I think we're all pretty excited about, did you guys, now that it's out in public, you can rest in on the secret if you knew, did you guys know that the state was going to take tri-ways? So you guys didn't go ahead?
No.
We've been hearing rumors.
We're very leery.
Sounds like it might be better than some of the options that could have gone along.
Well, we didn't know it was CE, that's why.
Oh, okay. So you guys, so that was a pretty, pretty cool thing, and it takes a lot of potential issues off the table.
Yeah.
And they come down the road, and I don't know if any of you have been out there, but it's really an amazing piece of property.
Yeah, the residents who were in that area were very, were, how could they not be not knowing what was going on?
Yeah.
But it's an amazing, amazing piece of property. And I'm sure that, actually, I would think that as the governing body of the town, you could request, you could get you hooked up going in there and find out what's, and see the place, because if you haven't been there, I highly recommend it. Because we've been in there several times on different applications. I think I fell apart, and it's an amazing piece of property. And it's a nice time to get a walk.
It is.
Unless it's raining.
All right. Do you have anything further for us?
No, I'm sure most of you will see me somewhere.
All right.
Next week?
Yes.
Just want to thank you for your time served and volunteering for the community. We'll be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday. Next up is Renee Legault is seeking appointment to the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission as an alternate member. His term would run from September 1, 2024, to August 31, 2026. This would be alternate member position number two. And alternate member terms run for two years from September 1 to August 31. Welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about your background and why you're seeking appointment to the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission?
Yeah, my name is Renee. I am a resident of Killenly. I was a resident of Killenly five and a half years ago, six years ago. My wife and I moved here. I work for the state of Rhode Island, so I'm a wetland biologist doing permitting there. The state program, so I figured I saw this, and I thought, hey, this up your alley. I was like, it definitely is. So, you know, it's one of those things where I like to get involved locally and, you know, be part. We lived there a few years, after the first few years pandemic, COVID, had a kid. So, you know, it was like, okay, we're going to bunker down for a bit, but now we're in a, in a good spot to spend some time, hopefully, help out around here. Yeah, this is definitely in my wheelhouse, and I feel like I can contribute to helping preserve and protect wetlands. So it's, you know, balancing the development responsibly and protecting the resources, so.
All right. Definitely want to thank you for coming forward, looking to serve, and sounds like with your background, you'll be a definite asset to the commission as well. Questions, comments from council?
I'm being from O'Donnell. Do you know a guy?
Oh, yeah. We all know everyone, right? The usual six-three separation, one.
I just, so as a biologist, I mean, with wetlands, I mean, the variety of species that, so, I mean, I mean, I don't think a lot of people, they just see overgrowth. They don't really understand what's, what's actually living there.
Yeah, plants are my forte in my land. I have to do those plants, you know, hydrology soils is my weakness, but it sounds like you have to ag first, then a surveyor, so.
I know, they heard that, and I'm like
I'm decent at soils, but it's not my strength. But, um, yeah, and then as far as species go, I mean, you know, you're looking for your bird eggs, you're looking for your reptiles, amphibians, especially this time of year, reptile food sort of popping. So if you want to, you know, you want to take advantage of that while you can, figure out where those important places are, a wildlife corridor.
Yeah, we have one over there in Owen Bell. We transferred all our turtles last year when we dredged, so.
So I just want to say, it sounds like you have your hands full, and thank you so much for stepping up, because these are all volunteer positions. But as Sandy stated, like, there is a lot of expertise across our boards and commissions, so you're just going to add to that, so.
And Sandy's a great, great person to work with, so.
You definitely have their vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for coming forward, and we'll be voting on your appointment next Tuesday. You don't have to be here. We'll notify. You can come if you want to, but if you're not here, we'll notify you. Okay. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we'll move on to next item. Next item up is item 3G. Lisa Danberg is seeking appointment to the Conservation Commission. As an alternate member, her term would run from November 1, 2025, to October 31, 2028. The Conservation Commission currently has one alternate member vacancy, and alternate member terms run for three years from November 1 to October 31. Welcome, Lisa. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself for those of us here who may not know you, and why you're seeking to serve in the commission?
Well, I've been a resident of Killenly all my life, and I want to, I want to be on the commission because a year ago, I was going for my master gardener certification, and I ran into this woman called Donna Bronson. She changed my life and very dedicated to Cat Hollow as a result. And with my education in forestry and my master gardener certification, I'm very dedicated to what our goals at Cat Hollow are. But beyond that, I had no idea until I joined the commission that there were many other parks in town that I need to get familiar with. So I'm really looking forward to being able to finally serve the iconic Killenly, because I've been trying to do this since 22. And I really hope this process goes a little more smoother than the last one. But, um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. Any questions, comments?
I got one. Hooray! This is the hottest worker right here, Donna. She's going to just knock it out of the park. My favorite gardener, hottest worker. Yay!
Thank you. Thank you for taking that. Now you have to come by and see what I did. That would be great. Actually, there's a tour on Sunday, on Sunday, if you're Mother's Day. But we actually, on Earth Day, I organized an Earth Day event down at Cat Hollow, and we cleared out, I've been walking down there for a year, and they have, it's not a path, it's a road. There used to be a road, and there was no access, direct access from that road down to the water. And Donna and I were walking by there, I don't know, three or four weeks ago, Donna, and I said, we could clean this whole area out, and it'd be great for fishing. There's access to the water. Got it grouped together, and banged it out, and it came up around there. Valley roadside, it came up. Very excited, to the point where Donna and I went down the next weekend studying. But I'd like, I'd like to be also involved in the other town parks that I have no experience with. And the Conservation Commission members are just, they're just wonderful people and very, very interested in maintaining the integrity and the environmental open spaces of our town. So, and I've been going to the meetings as it plays its citizens in strenuous ways, so I figured I might as well make it real.
All right. On behalf of the town and the council, definitely want to thank you for coming forward and looking to serve. And I believe this way, if you'll allow me to add something?
I just wanted to add that I know Lisa was at Silverbury Agriculture over in the barn last, was it last? Was it? Yeah, it was Ag Day, wasn't it?
Yes.
The Silverbury, over in the Brooklyn Fairgrounds, and she was answering, she was doing all, so I still, I have, and I have, I've actually expanded my pollinator species. So, so, yeah, my, I was so excited, all my milkweeds coming up, and my son gets really freaked out. He goes, you got to pull that. I said, no, that's for the caterpillars. Leave it alone. But, but yeah, she's, so Lisa's already doing what, and she's not even, even not even on conservation. She's already getting the word out there to save our pollinators, which is going to save our food supply, so.
Yeah.
It all works together.
Well, thank you for lending your vast knowledge, and we've been trying to get you for a long time, so yay! Very happy. Very happy.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward and looking to serve the community, and we'll be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
And I promise I won't cry if I don't win.
We wouldn't dare cross Donna.
Next up is item 3H. Brenda Kootu is seeking appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority, and Brenda is not here. And I don't see John LaBelle here either. So move on to item 3J. Jay Lee Stokes is seeking appointment to the Vision Committee. And so you're seeking appointment as an alternate member of the Vision Committee? The term would run from May 1, 2025, to December 31, 2000. Then it should actually, December 3, yeah, because that's right, it does terminate then. December 31, 2025, this would be alternate member position number one, and currently, the Vision Committee has three alternate member vacancies. Welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, and why you're looking to serve on the Vision Committee? Is the green light on?
Is that better? Okay. Oh, okay. So, yes, my name is Jay Lee Stokes, and as soon as I saw the Vision Committee flyer and, I think it was like the shopper's guide or something, I'm like, ooh, I need to do that, and I got really excited. Basically, anytime there's anything volunteer, if somebody asks, can we have help with that, I get really excited and I want to help. So I am already doing a lot of volunteer things with the KBA. I am the coordinator for the KBA, so I do a lot with that. And then I do a lot to help out at Westfield with Pastor John at our church. And I'm also an active Elks member, and I like to volunteer a lot with things with the Elks. So I originally did fill out this application a bunch of times, and I got nervous about the interview part, so I didn't do it. And then when Mary came to our KBA meeting, she was like standing right next to me, and I'm like, I have to do it. So I just, I want to make a difference. I like to help, and I like people and talking to people and figuring out what we can do to make things better, asking questions. And I feel like I have pretty good, like, effective communication. I follow up on things. I'm kind of persistent, like, when I'm going around getting gift cards and stuff for raffles. So.
I will open up to
He said I want to press the button, and he pressed it.
So I will go first.
Take Jesus.
You could be Jesus. I will go first. So Jay Lee is underselling herself. With the KBA, we call her the ambassador for Killenly. She supports every single small business in this community. She's the biggest cheerleader. She promotes everyone, and she's one of the sweetest people you'll ever meet. She gets along with everyone, and she also, when she says she's active in the Elks, she's beyond active in the Elks. She's at every meeting for the KBA. She's out in the community. She makes little videos on Facebook, just on her own, too. If she goes to Chubby Dog, she's posted a video. I met Chubby Dog today. You know, she's fully 100% engaged, and she would be a gift to the Vision Committee. This girl loves Killenly and everything about it, so she would be wonderful. Sorry if I, oh, and she sang, so we had Michelle two years ago sing the national anthem for us beautifully at Reach Across America, and Jay Lee sang for us last year, so.
I'm feeling a duet. We can do some harmonizing.
She does a lot more than she, she's like, I do this and that. She does everything. She'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
So what specifically are you looking to improve upon, preserve in Killenly?
I'm not 100% having a vision on what I'm preserving, but I do like to go to every single business and try to help, I guess, spread the word, if they're like promotions, they have events, if there are any events. I like to make sure everybody has a flyer. I'll get flyers for multiple events, for multiple people, and like, bring everybody together for stuff. And I think I'm more working with the people. So as far as like the communication on the actual Vision Committee, working with people, like, I have some ideas of what we can do as far as like economic development and advertising, but I'm not just here for my own agenda to help with that kind of stuff. I just want to help with everything that I can.
Did you hear some of the ideas of how to communicate with the people? Because we have, a lot of people don't know what's going on in the town, and it's hard to communicate with them. So we want a large majority, well, we want actually everybody's opinion from the whole town.
Yeah.
Do you have any ideas how to get everybody engaged or more engaged?
I just took a marketing workshop today with Don Marketing at The Chamber, and she went through a bunch of different ways to actually like connect with people as far as, not just as businesses, but with the community and like advertising. And she went through like each demographic and what each, can you sit, have a seat? One kind of responds most to on social media and all the different social media platforms. I myself prefer doing things in person, also live stream. I definitely prefer in person, but as far as like social media and that kind of stuff, I'm, I'm very active with that.
So I'm District 3, and the people in my district are more in person. They don't like to go to events. They don't like to do Facebook. They don't like to come to meetings. They prefer when someone comes to their door and they will communicate with that person.
Yeah, I'm also, I have a sales background, so I used to manage stores, and I worked for Sleep Number, and I, I like people and working with people. So I feel like, in general, yeah, I feel like I get along with pretty much everybody, and I try to hear what people actually are saying. And if I don't understand something, I ask for clarification, and, is that right? What is that? Okay. Yep. Thank you.
So would it be safe to say a role, because some of the other questions that we had was, what's your passion, blah, blah, blah? Like, your passion kind of sounds like business, but I can, just listening But I can, just listening to you talk, would it be safe to say your forte is gonna be just bringing communication skills to the Vision Committee? You know, since you're not like pinned down to a particular vision, we can, we can just ask what your vision is.
I...
Sounds like you've got the communication skill going on there, almost like Jonathan.
I do also, I constantly, I'm coming up with ideas for things. For example, with the branding thing, again, it is business, but it's an idea for interviewing everybody on the executive board for the KBA and doing interviews to have the community build bonds and strengthen our relationships with not just KBA members, but also everybody in the community, and be able to like get to know each other on a more personal level and not just business. So, I guess it's not business, but it is. I get a lot of ideas, and I just have to organize them.
One thing I look at as far as the Vision Committee is, is gonna be outreach, being able to reach the community. It sounds like that's something you'd be really good at. So, from that aspect, I can definitely see how you could be an asset to the Vision Committee.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I just, I think I've seen Kaylee in action as well, and it's, you know, marketing is, is, is part of getting the communication out. I mean, you get, tell enough people enough, you know, they start, I mean, it's, experience has taught me that sometimes it takes up to three years to get people to use to something being there, but if you tell them enough times, maybe it won't take quite three years.
I'm, I'm very persistent with things.
Yes, she is.
All right. On behalf of the council and the town, just wanna thank you for coming forward, looking to serve, looking to serve the community, and we'll be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, and now we'll move back to item 3I. John LaBelle is seeking appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority. As an alternate member, his term would run from November 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2026. This would be alternate member position number two. The Water Pollution Control Authority currently has two alternate member vacancies.
My name is John LaBelle, 57 Island Road, Daveel, Connecticut, Boiler's Table. What can I do for you?
Welcome, John.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, just give us a brief background about yourself and why you're seeking appointment to WPCA, and not just for us, for any viewers who may be watching at home as well.
Okay. I was born in Belleville.
Were you young, please?
I was, I was young, but I don't remember it. And, well, first of all, a personal history is, half of my life, I grew up in Belleville, the other half in Putnam, another quarter in Killingley, we moved back to Putnam, moved back to Killingley, so here I am. I consider myself to be a lifelong citizen of actually both communities. I, my mother was from Batty Street in Putnam. My father was in Belleville on a nine-mile walk. She would walk from Batty Street to my father's farm in Belleville and walk back home. I have her personality. When I got involved in politics, my father said, "Ooh, what are you doing that for? They're gonna beat you up, they're gonna suck your blood and leave you for dead at the end of the day." And my mother said, "You go for it. You have a responsibility to the community." So, I basically, you've probably read my resume, I won't read it again because it'll be midnight, but I, I have had a lot of health events. Most of you know about them. I do not let them get in my way. I've died once. They gave me five years in 1991. I wanna illustrate my personality if you don't already have it. Sometimes people say I'm committed, other times people say I'm a pain in the ass. I try to treat people the way I wanna be treated. If, if, when I was in grammar school, if there was a fight going on in the yard, I'd go in and break it up. So, and I'm very, very passionate about what I do and my family, my family's first. I, I had an opportunity to work for Mercedes-Benz because I was in partnership with an architect who was a contact for Mercedes-Benz and Siemens. And about five years after we got our business started, he got a call and said, "We want you guys to be in charge of all our construction in the United States." Two weeks later, Siemens called, said the same thing. So, I had the opportunity, you know, it was a pretty good opportunity. And we lived in Putnam, and I talked to my wife. This was like an opportunity that would never come along, ever, ever again. And I said, "I'm not moving my family. I'm staying here." So, we closed down our business after working there for five years. You know, we had been selected to be the architects for the Putnam Savings Bank and a few, and a few other large businesses in the area. We had to go to them and tell them, "Look, we're closing down our business." And did it because I wanted to stay here. And for people who move here, if you've been here for a short time, you'll find out why. Because the people in this community are generally good people, generally good people. They get very passionate about things like they did last night, and that's okay, as long as they're not disrespectful, you know? So, I try to speak my mind, sometimes too much. My mother tells me when I was three years old, I would stop and talk with everyone along the way. She'll ask me more times. I kept accusing her, trying to get rid of me, but I would stop and talk with anyone. So, I started school, I spoke French, did not speak English. Then after a while, I spoke English and did not remember French, except the Hail Mary, you know? Je vous salue, Marie, plein de grâce. And I thought it was Hail Mary full of grass, you know? My mother corrected me on that. So, and I've always had a good sense of humor, and so sometimes I see humor where other people say, my wife, my wife says it often, someday you're gonna get yourself in a lot of trouble with that sense of humor. So, went to grammar school, high school, Ellis Tech, went through the carpentry program, went back and did the architectural program, and studied international correspondence schools, course in architecture. I'm talking like 70s, late 60s, early 70s. And took that, took the national exams, which is four days long. One of the days is 12 hours to draw a project, and you always leave something out in a project, so if you don't see it, you don't get it. So, you go to these exams, and people were sitting there, you know, people, you know, nice three-basted suit and going along and looking very smart, and all of a sudden in the middle of the day, everything gets thrown in the air, they start swearing, they miss the part that they had to find that was in the program. Throw everything on the floor, and everything was hand drawn, no, no computers. When I saw that, I said, "Boy, what's my chances?" So, I passed and became an architect. And, you know, it's amazing, one day you're a job captain or a draftsman or whatever, the next day you're an architect, and your, your respect goes way up there. That's not right, but that's the way the industry is. And the way they grade, each state grades their participants, and they determine how many they're gonna let through the filter every year. So, Connecticut had three years in a row where they let one person into. National Council of Architectural Registration Board, which administered the exams, said, "Wait a minute, wait a minute." And they were giving the exams the same time of day on the East Coast and the West Coast. So, the people who took it on the East Coast would call the people on the West Coast and give them all their questions. So, they figured that out, and so at long last, what they did was, everybody submit your exams to us, they toss them in the air, wherever they land, so my exams were graded in California. And so I passed, and once, once you get that, you say, "Oh, no, now I'm a licensed individual, I can be sued." You know? So, you, you have to be, you have to be careful along the way. I've been very lucky, very lucky, and here I am, a farm boy, you know? My father had 20,000 chickens. He sold market eggs, his father sold, sold hatching eggs, and he was getting $16 a dozen in the 30s for his eggs. And he was known all the way down to Pennsylvania. So, he was like the biggest farmer on the East Coast. Then he went and died two weeks before I was born. I said, "Damn." So, but he was involved in the politics locally. He, he was town selectman here in the 30s, and he started a number of things in the area that we all kind of know about. The Putnam Farmers Co-op, he started that. He started the, the farmers' market on Murphy Road. He ran for, he ran for state representative, he knew several governors, and my father would tell me those governors would come on Sunday night and drink all his liquor, get drunk, and make all the noise, they couldn't sleep. He said, "Ah, man, I hated that." But, you know, it was Horace Sealy Brown and Dodd and other people where, so he became influential in getting some things done, not only here but across the state, but also bringing things into, into Killingley. He's my namesake. So, I always, I read about everything he did, and it's not all in writing. Just two weeks ago, I came across something new. Now, I know this is about me, but I see that we all are family, you know? And I want you to know that I treat everyone in the community like they're family, at least I try. And if you did an audit of your boards and commissions, you'd probably find more of us than you know, because people get married, they have a different name. When I got involved in politics, John Dempsey Senior was governor. He was a friend of the family. So, I'd go to his prayer breakfast, and he would give you advice on how to behave in politics. And the two things he said was, "John, you gotta act like a duck. You gotta be like a duck." "What are you talking about?" I said, "When you're covered with water and people are beating you up, you have to shed it or you'll die." And the other thing he said to me was, "Be true to yourself. If you can't be true to yourself, do not do this. And make sure, whatever you do, you do the right thing, right for the right reasons." So, every day I hear his voice, although I never really officially heard it, in my head. My mother was my big inspiration. I'd talk with her every day. "How would you do this?" Most of the time, she gives me an answer about, I talk spiritually with her every day. And she was one where, a little story where, when I was in grammar school, building, Hemingway had a vacant building on the street, and a friend of mine, at one time would go down and we'd borrow the pigeons and sell them. And my mother found out about it. She said, "Don't you ever do that again, okay? And you can fly with turkeys, or you can fly with eagles. You get at a different destination in your life." I try to learn from everyone. So, when I would interview people going along in my career, the first architect I worked for was a understudy of Frank Lloyd Wright. And I was to draw up a house, I had two weeks to draw it up, and he would come in in the morning, and he would tell me what to do. The afternoon, his wife would come in and tell me what to do, which was different, so on, he was telling me that to do. At the end of two weeks, he brings me to his office, and he says, "Young man, I'm gonna teach you a very valuable lesson, I'm gonna fire you." Now, for those of you that know LaBelle's in the area, LaBelle does not get fired, you don't go back home and fire. So, I get in my 1953 Plymouth Coupe, and I start driving down to the coast, and I drove along to see if I could find an architectural office. I had a roll of drawings, all hand drawn, and I couldn't find any. "Okay, I'm going home." Yeah, on Route 83 in a drive-by building, this is architects. I walk in with my drawings, and the partner of the company looks at my drawings, and he says, "Can you start tomorrow?" So, I was unemployed for one day. One day. It could have been more. So, my luck started there, and that was the only interview that I had in my whole career, in my whole career. And my last job was Vice President of Seneca Gaming Corporation, responsible for all their Niagara Falls construction, about a billion dollars. When I left there, they asked me to stay. I said, "No, I can't stay, I've got personal issues." So, I went from being a draftsman, and right away, they started telling me, "You need to do this job." So, I started doing what they call renovation work, and you go in, you measure, you've done that, you go and measure, lay a stick down, and you draw it up, and you do the renovations, and you're responsible for getting it done, getting it done with, and budget, you establish the budget, you can put it out to bid, et cetera, everything, the whole, the whole thing. One Sunday morning at 4:00 AM, I'm driving down to the office to print blueprints, and I realize it's Sunday, halfway there. And so, I kept going, got the, got the work done. That's, that's the other thing, I start so many projects, I've already, I get them done. So, that was my first, and my father told me that wherever you work, look for opportunities, look for things that people don't like to do, learn it, and become an expert at it. And so, I learned how to do grunt work. Something needed to be measured up, I'd go out and measure it up. So, I went from that, and they were a very good firm, treated me like family. And the only thing is, we had a baby along the way, and I couldn't afford that job. So, I got a job in Hartford, and I got a job for a firm that where you learn how to do what not to do. You know, when I left there, they had a corner of the building that was being torn down because the project manager had a 40th scale drawing drawn at 50th scale. You can get a lot more parking on a, on a, on a lot when you go to 50th scale. The only problem is, the guy who was building it wasn't told that it was that way. So, when I found out about that, I left that firm. Then I went to work for the architect who built Constitution Plaza, and just... Then I went to work for the architect who built Constitution Plaza and just happened to be lucky, you know? Young man, oh, you, just in time, sit down, that's your desk over there. And, uh, so he eventually put me in charge of all the construction at Constitution Plaza. Uh, most of it, the interior fit-outs, you know, like Price Waterhouse was a client, uh, Gold Building, yeah, most, most of the buildings in town I can point to, I say, right, there's this and this. Um, and then from there, uh, we had the downturn and Foxwoods was coming out of the ground. I started applying at Foxwoods and, uh, it took me three quarters of a year to be successful to get in there. But the guy who hired me was the second-in-command. He was the guy who wrote the compact with the state and, uh, he would tell me, write this up and he would sign his names, I was his ghostwriter. Um, and to this day, I still run a phone with him every once in a while. He'd call me in the office at nine o'clock at night and he'd yell, go home and hang up. Then he started yelling, you're fired and hang up. And he'd come in in the morning and start giving me work and I said, John, you fired me last night, I'm packing up. He said, oh, shut up and go back to work. Uh, and he, he was a Mashin Tucker, he was like a ninety percent Mashin Tucker. Uh, and, uh, you know, have any of you worked for a different country or a different tribe or tribe? Um, they are truly sovereign. They are truly sovereign and they really believe it and don't you step on any of their sovereign stuff. So one day I go into a meeting and the lady who's building a museum comes in, I didn't know at the time, she was, she's tribal member and she came in, put a computer down with the cord, wouldn't reach where she needed it to go. So I thought I'd be a gentleman and move it over to where I was, where it could reach, and moved over, a man. She came in and who moved my computer? She went upside of me, one side or the other and, you go into my living room and you move my computer. See, that's how they feel about their, um, their sovereignty. It's their living room and you have to learn what that means very quickly. Uh, another day, Skip Haywood, if y'all know who that was, the ultimate tribal chief, he calls me and we were, we were breaking ground for a five-story parking garage. And he says, loud enough so that I could hold the phone out here, I was gonna be fired in the morning, et cetera, et cetera. Somebody cut down some trees without doing the prayer around the tree, we'd always do a life-ending prayer around the trees. Um, so I called, I called John up and he said, don't worry about it. He was drunk. So, um, nothing was said the following day. Now, what I'm trying to illustrate is that, um, I'm flexible and I've been in front of a few trains, okay? And, uh, so I went from there, ten years at Foxwoods and I skipped a couple along the way here. And, uh, at Foxwoods, after you've been there for ten years, especially if you're a person from away, somebody's gonna want your job. And somebody did, so they eliminated my job and, uh, I said, thank you very much, goodbye, you've got two hours to get out of here. And they put, they stationed the person at my door to make sure I didn't steal anything. I looked up at that person and I said, really? You're gonna stand here? You know, I was a vice president. You're gonna stand here and watch me? Would you go away? He went away, didn't come back. And I had my admin, uh, pack up my boxes, but I was also told I wasn't to talk with anyone before I left. This is the part where I do the right thing, right. I told my secretary, I said, you call up all my staff, and it was about three, I want them in the conference room in five minutes. I went in the conference room, I told them what was going on, I said, you treat whoever follows me the same way you treat me. Packed my stuff and left. Well, that was a Friday, on Saturday I got a call from the Senecus. Hey, John, we heard you, you cut loose. On Monday morning, I went up there, I interviewed with someone I absolutely didn't know. And he's, he's got my, he's got my resume like this. He's talking and he, it makes me leave opening it up and looking at it. And he says, okay, I gotta get back to work, lunch is over. The following morning, he calls me and says, when can you start? I said, in two weeks. I need a break. Said, fine. They put me in a hotel, they kept me in a hotel until I found a place to live. Um, then, you know, so when I became, I became a facility manager, I skipped all that. I was an architect at Connecticut Mutual Life Insurance Company. And I was responsible for all their state work and also auditing and reviewing mortgages and properties that were being bought and financed by them around the country. Um, and so I would get called in on a problem. And one day a problem was out in, out in Washington State, the owner called and said, the elevator doors are not closing. So, I said, really? I kinda knew what it was. And I had one engineer that I trusted to, to look at everything. And we went out and looked at it and they failed to put in the wind bracing, so the building was doing this, a ten-story building. Hello? So, uh, we dealt with that, refinanced it. The financing cost it more than the original. And, uh, the, uh, how'd you like to be out in California with the chief building official? And get a call from your engineer who just inspected that five-story garage I told you about when the chief was on the phone a few years later. You're gonna call, I would have been inspected every two years, by structural engineer. He called and he said, good news, John, I've got the inspection done. Okay, what's the bad news? The garage will be collapsed in three weeks if you don't fix it. I said, what are you talking about? That's like two thousand car garage and, uh, very active. And, uh, he said, you know, when you go over the planks and they do this? Well, they're connected with Duckelbusters, okay? And they're doing this, okay? They were breaking loose. And he said, you're losing three or four a day. You have to close this garage immediately. So I hurried back, went and met with council and told them what was going on and they looked at me and said, get it fixed as soon as you can. But that took us six months to do the, the, uh, and the other, the other train I stood in front of there was a forty-six thousand square foot grand, great casino, casino, which had a net, a net of a million dollars a day. I had to close it. And the reason I had to close it, I will not disclose, however, went to council and said, here's the problem, here's, it's trajectory and here's what we need to do. I had hired the best construction firm out of Boston to evaluate it, put together an estimate, how many days? Twenty days. I had to take that casino out of business. We did it in eighteen. However, it was because I was driving the, the contractor. Anybody ever tell you that you can't tell the contractor what to do as long as you're saying you're walking within the boundary of your, uh, your contract? Uh, and some people, you know, like, those of you that are in construction here, you know, if you don't catch it at first, you'll catch it later with money. Okay, so the last ten years of my professional work, I worked doing forensic, forensic inspections as an expert witness on construction law claims. And you'd, you'd be amazed, you know, like, everybody thinks architects are perfect. They're not. Uh, and I'm not. Uh, but the way, along the way, because I was a carpenter, because I became an aircraft mechanic, because I knew how to fix chillers, I could know when I walked into a mechanical room whether that chiller was running right or not. Uh, so it gave me an upper edge in, um, in my whole career and so, and my reputation got out. Your reputation gets out like that. I have a national award from the DEEP, uh, for Green Lights Program. I talked the executives at Connecticut Mutual to join, be the first member business to join the Green Lights Program. And, uh, we had to tear out our whole boiler plant, our whole chiller plant, uh, and I supported the chill, the, uh, data center for the entire country at that location. Uh, so we had to do what, uh, you would expect we would have had to have done. I, uh, as you can see in here, I've been involved in politics since nineteen oh six, no, it was seventy-nine. And when I got involved, my father said, well, I told you, he said, and I've been involved ever since. John Dempsey Senior was a, was a mentor, Leo Tatro, for those of you who know him, was another mentor. I worked on everyone in Chris Dodd's campaign until he decided to run for senate. Um, and you can read my involvement, my life got involved once in a while. Uh, we did a heart front drive, we did a cancer drive, we did, you know? And the town in Putnam wanted me to run for, well, I became chairman of council and I was president of the Chamber of Commerce as well. And the town council wanted me to run for state representative. And so I said, uh, and I felt a responsibility to do that. So I got home, I found out Kevin Johns wanted to also run, so he and I sat down in my living room and we flipped a coin. He ran. Um, and I don't know if he regrets it or not, but anyways.
Quite, quite a life. John, could you tell us why you wanna be on the WPCA?
Can you tell me why you're considering putting me on that?
It's all that long bunch of experience. Very profound, very profound life.
I feel that rather than me sitting on a, a commission or a board that has the same thing to do every year, every week and the protocol is established and, uh, the guidelines are there and, um, doesn't have as much of a financial impact on the community. Um, as I've seen the progression of non-progression at the wastewater treatment plant, I felt it's time I, it's time I, I stood up. If you notice, my application is dated a year before I submitted it because I was waiting for someone of, of greater knowledge than myself to get on that board. Um, you know, in the process of the projects I've done, there have been three wastewater plants built. I wasn't in charge of them, I was job, job, charged it overall project. Um, so I feel that I cannot any longer stand by the wayside and in my estimation, see a project that's valuable to the community just drag on and on. I met with, uh, I went with the director of the wastewater plant yesterday, went over some concepts with him, listened to what he had to say. And, um, I asked him about alternates, why do we have this, why do we have that, how come we haven't pursued this or that? So, uh, I will only serve on that committee if you want me, number one. Number two, only as long as I'm effective. If I'm not effective, I'll resign. I will not, I will not be part of a, I, I don't sit here at the table, you know, I'm not, I won't be that way. And if I can't be effective, if I can't accomplish things in the usual way that I get things done, and most of you know how I do that, um, then I will resign because, um, I don't think it's fair to the community or fair to me. Um, I was on the building commission before I went to Niagara Falls for five years. Specifications were being written for the high school. I had many disagreements with the town manager on the contracts, et cetera. Um, and I disagree with some of the things he did, ended up doing and maybe resulting costs with his actions. Um, and I have been, in terms of being in front of a train, when I was in Niagara Falls, they laid everybody off except for me and my boss was in the process of building an eighteen PGA. I was halfway through and the CEO came to me, here, John, we'll finish it, let me know if you need anything. I didn't know anything about building golf courses, right?
John, um, we do have to go over the financial audit and we have our auditors waiting, so we do need to wrap up the interview.
Need to wrap it up? Is that what, cellophane or, uh, aluminum foil? I'm sorry, I do not lose my sense of humor. Uh, most of you know me, some of you are getting to know me. I will do the best that I can to move that project along, working with the people that are there. And I already asked the director if I get appointed, if I want to tour other plants, I wanna bring some experts in, I wanna look at the contract. I, I looked at the contract that was sent out and I had fifty changes that I would make to it. Um, and, uh, this is what you get. Now, I do have some health issues, okay? I have to deal with them, a couple of them are pretty serious, but, you know, someone would say, well, why would you wanna do that when you've got this coming up? And I said, well, why would I wanna put it off in case it's the last thing that I do? You know? And so, I'll tell you one more story. When, I had a heart attack in nineteen ninety-one, okay? Quadruple bypass, two widow makers blocked, two, not just one. I should have been dead twice. So, uh, they, they released me and, and said, you've got five years, maximum of five years. While I was in recovery, two of my staff, I had seven direct staff, I think, four hundred and fifty people at that time, had applied for my job while I was still in the hospital. How would you deal with that when you get back to work, okay? So I get back to work and one of my trusted reports came in and he said, John, you need to know these guys will, they wouldn't do that. I said, yes, I know they did it. So I would, I did a, uh, a download with them when I started, brought them in each individually, we sat and we chatted and just before leaving, I said, good to see you, I hope we can keep on doing this. Oh, by the way, I heard this rumor. Can't be true, I don't, I don't believe it's true. Did you really try to apply for my job while I was dying? You know? So that's the way I handle, you know, a tough situation, you know? When you, do you fire the person, do you find a false reason to let him go? Or do you bring him in to the fold and have that person understand that you've got his back? That's the way I work. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right. We'll be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is citizen statements and petitions. Do we have anyone who would like to make public comment?
Go, John. Donna Bronwell, Bailey Hill Road, up in East Killenley, just a quick one. I understand that DEEP is purchasing the Tri-Lakes property up in East Killenley. Um, it's a six hundred and some acre parcel that's along the Rhode Island Line.
Donna, just for clarification, with it being a special meeting, any comment has to be pertinent to what's on this evening's agenda.
Okay. Never mind, it's, it's a good thing, though, that DEEP is buying the property. Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Conroy, do we have anything submitted by email?
No, sir, we've received no comments.
Thank you. Thank you. So now we'll move on to old business. We have none. We'll move on to new business. Oh. Were you going to make a public comment?
Sorry, yes. Last night was a tough night for you guys.
Mr. Chairman, that also is not on the agenda. Special meeting.
Yep, special meeting. So any public comment has to be just on what's on this evening's agenda.
Well, you've got the audit in there.
The audit's on the agenda, but not the meeting that was out last night. That was a budget meeting that was not pertaining to this. This is last year's budget.
I don't want to disagree with you, but in the broader text of the community, the audit should include that. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Seeing nowhere for public comment, we'll move on. Next item up, we have no old business. New business is item 6A, Presentation of the Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2023 to 2024 by Mahoney &amp; Sable LLP. Welcome and thank you for waiting for us to finish our interviews.
Good. Not a problem. And thank you very much. Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. Again, my name is Mike Van Deventer. I'm a partner at Mahoney &amp; Sable, ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit and issuing the reports on behalf of the firm. Joining me this evening is Samantha Thomas. Samantha is a senior manager at the firm, really responsible for the day-to-day execution of our audit procedures. So hopefully by this time, everybody's received electronic copies of the reports that were issued in connection with the audit. As in the past, I'll go through a presentation that really provides a summary of the work that was performed, the reports that were issued, provide some overall financial highlights, make our required communications, and again, happy to answer any questions that any of the members may have. So with that, I'm going to share my screen and pull up the presentation.
All right, you can go ahead.
All right, Jen, if you could forward to slide two. As far as the scope of work, again, no changes in terms of the scope of work performed from prior years. So we did do an audit of the town's financial statements. That audit was performed in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants and the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition, based on the level of federal and state funding that was received and expended by the town, we did perform both federal and state single audits. The federal single audit was performed in accordance with the uniform administrative requirements, and the state single audit was performed in accordance with the Connecticut State Single Audit Act. In addition, we do also perform and agree upon procedures on the end-of-school-year reports that are filed by the school district with the State of Connecticut Department of Education. Next slide. In addition to these attest services, we do perform some non-audit services for the town. So we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, and state financial assistance and related notes. We also assist in converting the town's governmental fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. In order for the firm to be able to perform these non-audit services and remain independent of the town, again, management is required to oversee the services and ultimately accept responsibility for them. Again, Jennifer Hawkins is the finance director, has accepted responsibility for these non-audit services, and therefore we remain independent of the town. Next slide. In connection with our audit, we do issue a number of reports. In terms of the report on the financial statements, we did issue unmodified clean opinions on the financial statements. And again, we express an unmodified opinion when we've concluded that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, and that is established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. I do like to point out, if you read our opinion, we do only provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. Again, our opinion does not provide absolute assurance. We do not test every transaction. We do utilize sampling in our audit methodology. The financial statements do include estimates, and therefore we cannot provide absolute assurance on those financial statements. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we also issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. Again, if you read this report, we do not actually express an opinion on the town's compliance with laws and regulations or on the effectiveness of the town's internal controls. Essentially during the course of performing the financial statement audit, if we become aware or identify material non-compliance of laws and regulations, or a significant deficiency or material weakness in the town's internal controls over financial reporting, we're required to include it in this report. And again, we did not report any such matters. Next slide. In connection with the federal single audit, we issue a report on compliance at the federal award level. Again, in this report, we do actually express an opinion on the town's compliance with your major federal programs. For fiscal year 2024, the total federal awards that were expended was approximately 6.4 million. The major programs were the Education Stabilization Fund and the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, also referred to as the ARPA funds. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on your compliance over those programs. And again, we did not report any grant deficiencies over those programs. We issue a similar report in connection with the state single audit. Again, for fiscal year 2024, the total state financial assistance that was expended by the town was approximately 35.7 million. The majority of that is considered exempt and is not subject to our compliance testing. The portion that was considered not exempt was about 5.9 million. The major programs were the municipal grant aid, the local capital improvement program, the school readiness program, the local bridge program, and then the community connectivity grant program. Again, based on our audit work, we did issue unmodified clean opinions over compliance on those programs, and we did not report any deficiencies over grant compliance. on those programs, and we did not report any deficiencies over grant compliance.
Hello, I just have a question. What are some possible reasons the Board of Ed gives us their information so late every year? This is consistent. I understand this year, their finance director was out for a health issue, so that may explain this year, but our audit from them is consistently late, year after year. In your professional opinion, what are some possible reasons for that? And how do we help them improve on that? They don't seem to have a really good answer, so I was just, in your professional opinion, what have you seen in other districts? Like, what's the holdup with the school getting the information to the towns? So I guess you can answer that, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for him or for Jen. Remember, we had some, or Buddy, sorry. Remember, we had some issue with the reimbursements coming back a little late. Are we all set this year, you guys? For the school reimbursement?
Yeah, I believe you did address that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that was part of...
No, the way I understood how we addressed it was we're still waiting on it. So remember, they had had some trouble filing. Are we all set with that? Yeah. Do we suspend rules? Do we have to?
Yep. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the finance director to speak. So yours, you're making the motion?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Michelle Murphy, seconded by Patty George. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
Are you specifically referring to the school construction reimbursements on the projects? Yeah. So we received a number of our initial reimbursements on KMS. We're waiting for our second round, so that did alleviate some of the deficit that Mike had mentioned. We did also issue a significant amount of our bonds, so that will also help with that. So we won't do our final round of bonding on that until we get our last phase of reimbursement. So we got like the next, like, phase, because the project is almost, is essentially completed. And once we do that, we will then do our final bonding with anything left that's not been reimbursed from the state. So that's why we just finished issuing those notes. So you'll likely see that deficit continue on that next audit, because June 25 is right around the corner. So likely, that will be cleaned up in 2026.
So we, did we have to take extra notes, Jen, then?
We didn't take extra notes. It's really what they call bond anticipation notes, because there are bonds that are out there until we're anticipating those reimbursements to come in, because we don't know what we're gonna yet issue for bonds. So it's kind of like a cash flow.
And they get cleaned up at the same time?
Correct. It's like a cash flow. So it just doesn't eliminate the way that deficit looks like in the presentation to the financial statements. So. But as of right now, we are not aware of any issue with those reimbursements, and we're still deeming them fully collectible.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I just want to say thank you for presenting this audit. And I'm glad, glad to hear that, and glad to see that the audit came out really well, and we didn't have any major deficiencies. All right. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is Item 6B, Consideration and Action on our Resolution to Accept the Town's Basic Financial Statements and Related Audit Reports for the Fiscal Year Ending in June 30, 2024. Can I get a motion to adopt that resolution? Motion was made by Ms. Barclay. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe second was Mr. Whitehead. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. While I'll move on to the agenda, next item up is Item 6C, under new business, consideration and action on the resolution to appoint Mahoney, Sable &amp; Company LLP certified public accountants to perform the town's audit for fiscal year 2024, 2025. This item is to retain and extend a contract with the firm of Mahoney, Sable &amp; Company LLP, the town's current independent order, to complete the town's financial audit for the fiscal year period July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. Mahoney, Sable &amp; Company have prepared the town's audit for eight fiscal years. This will be renewing the contract for an additional two years beyond the previous three-year contract for auditing services with Mahoney, Sable &amp; Company that was approved in 2022. The agreement includes a stipulation that the firm be reappointed annually based on performance. The town is required by state statute to appoint an auditor 30 days prior to June 30 of the fiscal year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion was made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Ms. Barclay. I will open up for discussion.
I mean, Mahoney and Sable have done a very good job over the years, so, and they're very familiar with our books and all our little idiosyncrasies that come with the town of Killingley. So I'm pretty confident they'll continue to do really good work.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkins, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
You know, the town as a whole has continued to work, to kind of work on our timing and our closing procedure, closing calendar. So given that circumstance, I think it's in, and also in the period of in transition, and the fact of where we are, and the fact that this is due, I think it's in our best interest to continue for another two years. And given the fact that we're in an audit shortage, I do pay attention to where we are in the market. I think from a price point perspective, it's in our best interest to continue. Again, Mahoney, Sable does great work. They know us well. I do think we get a great audit. We get different team members every year on our audit, where I think we're getting a fresh look, fresh perspective. I don't have any concerns where I think the team becomes complacent and things that they look at. I'm coming from my old audit background, so forgive me for a second. So I don't think that, you know, we go stale in the things that they look at, and there's always surprises even to me. So I like to think I know what everyone's gonna ask for, but, and what I think they're gonna prepare based on what I think and how they're gonna want it, but I'm even surprised. So, and that's a good thing. So with that, I don't think that there's any issues with continuing with the firm for the length of time that we have. And the town should, you know, feel comfortable with the fact that I think we're getting a very deep and thorough audit every year.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say, or, yes, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Moving on to the agenda, next item up is executive session, and we have nothing for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion was made by Mr. Kurtula, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, this meeting is adjourned.